January 21st, meeting of the Everett School Committee will come to order. Roll call, please, Lauren.
Ms. Cardella?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Lamonica?
Yeah.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Perry's?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Sarn?
Here.
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
All nine members present, we have a quorum. Reading of the records. I'm sorry, it's due, uh, pleasure to leave.
Pleasure to leave, Mr. to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, taking on...
Mr. Chairman? Yes? Can I ask for a moment of silence, please? Former Director of Title I, Peggy Blake, passed away. When I think of Ms. Blake, I think of Fast Forward, which probably was one of our four reasons using technology in schools, so if we just have a moment of silence on her behalf. All right, now, reading of the records.
Take a motion to waive the reading of the records.
And second?
Motion made and seconded to waive the reading of records, except as written. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As opposed. Room number two, reported superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is the Academy Spotlight. Mr. Norman, Dr. Eazy.
Right here. Thank you.
I don't know which academy's going first, so you're on your own.
Entertainer motion to bring these, uh, fine people forward.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As opposed, Mr. Norman, the floor is yours.
Sorry for the casual...
That's all right. The floor's sort of already yours anyway, Mr. Norman, huh?
No. Just here running you, good time. Good evening, thank you for inviting us here this evening. It's always our pleasure when we can promote students here at Everett High School for the Academy Spotlight. We'd also like to mention, welcome to all the new members, welcome to all the previous members, and special welcome to our student representative, Ashley Yaba, who's sitting up in front of the desk, so thank you for inviting us all here this evening. First this evening, on behalf of Dr. Eazy, myself, and Mr. Barrett, we'd like to bring up Mr. Donadoni, who is the Assistant Principal of the Freshman Experience, who will introduce his Academy Spotlight students.
Thank you very much. We have two Academy Spotlight winners. First, we have for the month of November, her name is Kathleen De Souza. She can come right on up, and I'll say a couple words. Kathleen has been described as an exceptional student, who consistently works hard, consistently works hard, she is kind to others, displays responsibility, consistently striving for excellence, and I think most, that we're most appreciative of the fact that she's a role model, both in the classroom and as a human being, as the teacher said, so I'd like to present this award to Kathleen...
Do you want to stand up?
Oh, sure. To Kathleen.
We have a photographer over here.
Right. Okay, sure. Okay. The next, for the month of December, the Academy of the Freshman Experience would like to recognize Jackie Flora Esgera. Jackie has been described by her teachers as always being respectful. Helpful is another student who's great with her peers and consistently produces quality work. Overall, they describe her as a wonderful student, consistently exceeding their expectations. But it's applause. Good job. And to her as well, the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Donadoni. Next up, from the Academy of Science, Technology, and Engineering, Assistant Principal, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This Academy of Science, Technology, and Engineering would first like to recognize Melissa De Marku as a senior in the Academy in the SEED Pathway. She is an active member of the History Club, Student Activist Club, National Honor Society, Student Ambassadors, and the STEM Club. Currently, Melissa is enrolled in the PLTW Engineering and Design Development, a Capstone course. Melissa's group has identified their problem as accessibility areas in our city. Melissa and her group are looking to make a difference by solving part of the problem of accessibility with people having mobility challenges in our city. Melissa also recently spoke at a panel about the Academy model to visitors from Lawrence High School where, who were interested in hearing about our students' successes. Congratulations, Melissa. The next student we'd like to recognize for the month of December is Genova Madrano Ramirez. Genova was nominated by her English and Engineering teachers. She is excelling in her Engineering Design Pathway class, as well as her content classes. Genova works really hard every day and has improved her grades from quarter to quarter while also providing help and support to her fellow classmates. Genova's teachers agree that she's made great progress in both her language development and in mastering the content of her classes. Congratulations, Genova.
Thank you, Mr. Black, and just a quick mention, so everyone can remember her face, Mr. Marku wants to be a teacher in the future, so if you guys see her in a few years when she comes back, she would love to be part of the Everett Public School system as a teacher.
You're hired.
Next up, from the Academy of Health and Public Service, we have Ms. Bob.
So Diana Tadic is our November Academy Spotlight student. So the Academy of Health and Public Service would like to recognize Diana Tadic with the Academy Spotlight student of the month for November. Diana was cited by every one of her teachers for being extremely kind and a positive influence to everyone she encounters. Her work is always passed in, and she gives it her all each and every day. Diana is a junior here at EHS and has maintained the honor roll every semester, even with a rigorous course load that includes honors and advanced placement classes. She is outgoing and hardworking. Diana is also a member of the track team. We are extremely proud to recognize Diana as our Spotlight student for November. Also of note, we have our December Spotlight student who was unable to join us. Her name is Maria Costa Mara, and I will make sure that she gets her certificate as well.
Thank you, Dr. Eazy and Ms. Bob. Next up, from the Academy of Business Law and Hospitality, Misty Natale.
November Student of the Month comes from a Business Law and Hospitality Academy in the Culinary Pathway. I'm proud to announce that that student is Senior Ashley Yaba. Ashley Yaba is third-year Culinary Arts student who has grown immensely throughout her time here at Everett High School. As a student athlete, Ashley excels on the athletic field, as well as in the classroom, as a dedicated culinary student with a "yes chef" attitude, and the ability to rise to all challenges. Ashley has developed the drive and the motivation to be very successful in the culinary industry. Ashley has already been accepted to Johnson and Wales University to further her culinary career. The December Student of the Month for Business Law and Hospitality Academy is Senior Turan Tashkin. Turan is a hard-working student who is admired and respected by his peers, as well as his teachers. Turan's disciplined work habits not only help him succeed in the classroom, but enable him to diligently participate in several extracurricular clubs, including Student Ambassadors, National Honor Society, the Mock Trial Team, and most recently, a contribution to the Crimson Tide. Turan is not able to be here this evening because he attends a dual enrollment class on Tuesday evenings, so congratulations, Turan.
Thank you, Misty Natale and Dr. Eazy, for the assistance. Next up, we have Ms. O'Reilly from the Academy of Construction, Machining, and Architectural Design.
In reviewing nominations for Spotlight Student of the Month for the C-MAT Academy, one name stood out above all others. Jennifer Hernandez received four teacher nominations for our Academy Student of the Month. Jennifer is described as a respectful, hard-working, dedicated student who has excellent attendance and is always prepared for class. Jennifer works extremely hard in all her classes and is a very strong advocate for herself. She is a dual-identified student who perseveres daily through adversity and consistently comes after school to work with teachers so that she can achieve excellence. Jennifer is also described as a kind, caring, and thoughtful student who eagerly helps others whenever she can. Jennifer embodies the ideals to which all students aspire to emulate. Our second student, Spotlight Student of the Month was unable to be here tonight. That student is Jaclyn Abranzas, and we will make sure she gets this tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you to all the Assistant Principals and Dr. Eazy. We can remain if there are any questions or anyone has anything to ask.
Congratulations, folks.
Not yet. So to my right is Ms. Yaba. Ms. Yaba is the ex-officio student rep. It was a national law that we accepted last year, so in her role, she will be able to participate, debate, question, but she won't be able to vote. So, Mr. Norman, if you could, just kind of explain what we can expect from the student rep role moving forward.
Sure. We've finally caught up to where we need to be with having a student on the school committee. Ashley was the perfect choice as we moved into the opening student for this. We're going to rotate students through, we're going to start with some members of the senior class, and then we're going to move down to junior and possibly sophomore and freshman, depending on the amount of meetings as we go forward. We have a few students already pre-selected to be up here and sit up here on the committee. Some are students that'll be elected to school government, some are students that have run their own kind of school government piece, we want to give them all the chance to be able to have a voice up here. Ashley attended the training, I believe, with all of the school committee members recently. She spent several hours with everyone up here at the high school, and she has plenty of notes that she's taking. She's a wonderful student.
She's certified.
She's certified, she's always communicating with me in the office about student needs, about things that are going around the building, so she's the perfect choice to open this up, and we're looking forward to getting a few more students up here so they can have some representation on this board. So thank you so much. If there are any, ever, if you ever have any questions, please let me know, but we will rotate a few students over the next few months coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Norman, and we'll be happy to invite those students to join us at the MSAC Day of the L when that becomes announced.
Excellent.
Later on this year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Eazy.
Excuse me, the costume, Mary, thanks.
Yes, yes, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Item number two is the Shore Educational Collaborative Annual Report, and I request
permission to bring Mr. Robert Alcanada, the Assistant Executive Director of Shore Collaborative, forward to present.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bring forth Robert Alcanada. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As opposed.
Superintendent Gauthier, ladies and gentlemen of the school committee, the superintendent has invited me to present the Shore Collaborative Annual Report and audit, and I would be remiss if I didn't, not saying that it was 22 years ago this month that I was sitting on this board, and, Mr. Chairman, 18 years ago when I was elected chairman the first time, and you as vice chair, so it's nice to come...
Seems like yesterday.
Yes, it does. It's nice to come home, thank you. And Mr. David Eila was a colleague of mine, he was the chairman of the Shore Board of Directors and has not, of course, returned, so I will try to step into his shoes, and I would also be remiss if I didn't indicate the friendship that Mr. Eila and I have developed over the last 20 years. Livingston and Haynes completed Shore's audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, in September. They were with me for three weeks. The first week, they did their risk assessment, which is essentially testing our financial and other internal controls. The final two weeks was the actual audit. I am pleased to report that Shore received a clean, unqualified opinion. There were no deficiencies in our audit, so we have produced a perfect audit for FY19. I am also happy to report that, to indicate that Shore is in a solid financial position, and I feel that we're well situated for the 2020s. We are in full compliance with DESI, and also, we have an Adult Services Division where we're regulated by the Department of Developmental Services, and we are in full compliance with them. The audit has been shared with all of our nine-member superintendents, has been uploaded to DESI, a copy has been forwarded to the state auditor, and of course, it has been posted on Shore's website. So I don't know if there are any questions regarding the audit, but if not, I can move on to our annual report. We, our annual report details the programs and services that Shore Educational provides, not only in the Student Services Division, but our Adult Services as well. We have nine members of Shore Collaborative, of course, the Everett Public Schools being one of the founding members, and I think if you look at that annual report, you'll see that there is a significant, significant cost savings in students who are referred to Shore as opposed to an out-of-district, private-day school. In FY19, that savings was anywhere between $10,400 and $28,000 per student. So, as you know, out-of-district is quite costly, and at Shore Collaborative, we provide a cost-effective option, knowing full well that not every student can go to Shore. There are some students that need to go out of district. The annual report also details the district services that we provide to our members, from transition services to home training. In our transition program, we delivered 1,140 hours of service, and also provided 20, 20 Everett Public School students service. Our home training provided over 1,700 hours, agency-wide, not just to Everett. Our municipal Medicaid billing program billed almost $3.9 million for 13-member and non-member districts, including approximately $1.2 million for the Everett Public Schools in FY19. And finally, there is a significant part of that annual report that details our Adult Services. Like the audit, the annual report has been posted to our website, shared with all of our member superintendents, and it's been uploaded to DESI. The annual report also details FY19, some of our real estate transactions. In the summer of 2018, we signed a new lease for a 32,000-square-foot building in Chelsea. Renovations were throughout FY19, and two months ago, the adult, the Chelsea Adult Services and the administration of Shore moved into that new building on Crescent Ave and Chelsea. The footprint that we left at our Revere Beach Parkway building, we still own that building, and we're going to continue to own it, that footprint that we left when Adult Services and Administration moved out will be renovated in calendar year 2020. It will not all be completed by the end of FY20, it will go into FY21. We're going to add more classroom, more programmatic spaces for our various services for members, so it is quite an ambitious growth period that we're in. So I wanted to mention that because we're very proud of it, we've worked very hard to get there, and as I said, I believe that Shore Collaborative is well-positioned and well-situated for the 2020s. And we hope that throughout that time, the Everett Public Schools will continue to remain a strong partner of ours as we service your students and provide various services to this school district. So I can answer any questions or...
Mr. Chairman, through you, Ms. Alcanada.
And Ms. Cardella.
Would you please mention the open house that's going to be taking place shortly?
Yes, I will, will, Ms. Cardella, and Ms. Cardella has joined our Board of Directors and attended her first meeting last week. We are going to have an open house on February, Thursday, February 27th, from 3:30 to 7:00 at our new Crescent Ave location. There'll be, we're hoping to have a good crowd, we would like to show off our new digs, as they say, all of our workshops, again, it's the Adult Services and Administration, but we're inviting all of our member superintendents and sped directors so that they'll have a full understanding of the services we provide. Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you, I think it's important, especially with the new facility, it's beautiful. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Murray.
I had a question regarding page 14 of the report. So when I'm looking at the number of students that districts are sending...
Yes.
Everett is proportionally considerably higher than any of the others, except Revere, and when I looked at the Medicaid reimbursement, it looks like Revere's having an unusually high number of students this year, whereas Everett is consistently high. I was wondering if you can speak to why Everett is so much consistently higher in the number of students that we're sending to Shore?
Well, there's no correlation between the Medicaid reimbursement and the number of students on page 14. Page 14 is essentially our transition program, and there happen to be 20 Everett students that are taking part in that transition program, for whatever matter the sped director has decided that these 20 kids should provide that service. In terms of the municipal Medicaid billing, that's just a, that is a function of the students who qualify for mass health and the services that not only we provide, but your therapist as well, here in Everett Public Schools, when they are providing any type of service. So there, it all depends on who qualifies, what services they're receiving, the frequency, and that really drives the number for the Medicaid.
And in terms of the Medicaid reimbursement, I'm assuming that we have some financial responsibility beyond this amount that we've been reimbursed in terms of tuition. Is there a way that we can know how much money we're financially responsible for once Medicaid has reimbursed us for their portion of it?
We build, in FY19, we build approximately $1.2 million, and that is a matter between you and city government in terms of that money coming back to Everett, how that is allocated, whether it's through the chargebacks, or years ago, there used to be a certain amount of money, but that is a matter between you and city government. We're just the third-party administrator, we're billing, as I said, in FY19, the $1.2 million, for you.
Thank you for your patience, I'm new to the committee, so...
Yeah, anytime, yeah.
Anyone else? Ms. Parker? Ms. Alcanada, just looking at your facilities, you're renting classrooms both in MedFid and Saugus, what are those type of programs, Bob?
We rent a, one classroom in MedFid, one classroom in Saugus. Those are for, typically for students who are in the higher grades, probably middle school, where they are not necessarily ready to mainstream back to the referring district, but they, they don't need to be a Shore Collaborative. So it gives these students an opportunity to be in a larger school, if you will, and begin the transition back to the referring district. Those students in MedFid and Saugus can come from anywhere, there might be one from Everett, there could be one from Chelsea, and then going from MedFid to Saugus, we rent those classrooms, just one classroom in each of those communities.
Okay, thank you. So then, other than the real estate transaction, what's next for the Shore Collaborative?
That's enough. We had, as you know, we moved into the 32,000-square-foot building, we'll have probably a $2.5 million renovation to our Revere Beach Parkway in calendar year 2020. We're looking at some, some new lines of programs that we may bring online, we discuss that generally at our operating committee, which is the first Friday of every month with the sped directors. We try to adapt to the needs of our districts, what the sped directors are requiring, how we can be helpful and partner with them and the school districts, so there's a lot going on.
Ms. Alcanada, it's great seeing you.
Mr. Abaziz, it was, it was good to be here, and thank you for inviting me back. As I said, it was good to come home, and I'm only down the street. If you need me for anything, you know where I am.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, the costume, Mary, thanks. Item number three is the acceptance of school-based Medicaid claims in the amount
Make a motion to accept the school-based Medicaid claim?
Have a second.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Motion was made to accept the...
Medicaid.
The school-based Medicaid claims, the amount of $342,794.20.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept school-based Medicaid claims in the amount of $342,794.20. All those in favor? Mr. Chairman? Yes? Question? On the motion? Mr. Brmski, so as Mr. Alcanada pointed out, through Shore Collaborative, we recruit $1.2 million, which goes back to the general fund. The money that we're discussing right now, is that the same type of situation?
Yeah, that's $342,000, as part of that, approximately $1.2, $1.3 million that will come in, so that will go into the general fund.
All right, so that, I'm glad you clarified, so it's $1.2 million, not $1.5 in total?
Well, it fluctuates year to year.
Yeah.
Mr. Parker, so this year, I can get an estimate from Shore Collaborative and bring it to the next meeting on what we believe it will be, but I'm going to say it's going to be between $1.00 to $1.4 million.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Motion made and seconded to accept school-based Medicaid claims in the amount of $342,794.20. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As opposed.
Pardon me?
No, it's all right.
I'd like to take items four and five collectively and request favorable action.
So move.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to take items four and five and move favorable action. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item number four is the acceptance of the following school council minutes. The Adams School, December 17th, 2019. George Kavarian School, January 9th, 2020. Everett High School, December 10th, 2019. Item number five, the acceptance of the following grant. Fiscal year 20, the ASOSed Grant, Fund Code 528, for $100,000.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to take a short recess. As you know, Mrs. Telleiani has signed her contract, it was negotiated by our attorney, and it's now for the full body to sign that contract. So the sign's sealed and delivered for start date of March 1st. So if we could collectively as a group, set up at the table in front of us, and we decide that contract. And so with that, I make a motion for recess.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to recess to sign Superintendent Telleiani's contract. Before we do, I just want to let Mr. Telleiani and the board know that I spoke with the mayor today. Mayor had a prior commitment. He did want to be here for this. Explained to me, he's extremely excited to work with Superintendent Telleiani and is looking forward to it, but sends his regrets for not being here tonight. With that, motion made and seconded to take a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you. Ms. Garthia, I've been making a mistake in reading the items submitted by school committee members, so it's actually, it's actually the secretary's position, so if you want to go with Roman numeral three?
Certainly. Thank you for the added responsibility. I thought I could sleep. Okay, item number one is the budget and planning process for FY21, including implications of the Student Opportunity Act. Mr. Parker?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the budget of the whole committee.
You have a second?
A second.
The motion made and seconded to refer item one to the budget of the whole committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Can I speak on it?
Absolutely.
All right. Wait, it's the first time you're doing this?
First time, yes.
So if we could, I could ask Mrs. Garthia for an update. While the legislature implies or tells us what we have to do from a budgeting standpoint, an April 1st report against stakeholders involved, there really hasn't been a lot of guidance provided up until this point. And Mrs. Garthia, I know it's privy to some information she received by attending some workshops and some professional groups, if she could share that with us and tell us like what's next?
Sure, we'd love to.
We talked about Thursday night.
So I am, absolutely. So on Thursday night, the 23rd, 6 o'clock, in the cafeteria at Everett High School, we're having the first stakeholder meeting. School councils have been invited, union representation, school committee is all invited. Who am I leaving out? Come on, help me out here.
Special education.
Special education pack.
EL.
EL pack and Title I pack. And it's open to the public. There is a posting on the website, so you know, the public is invited. All they have to do is listen. We have a PowerPoint presentation. It's co-presented by the school committee and the Everett Public School Administration. We want to show unity in our approach to this and collegiality and working together to make sure this is implemented in the best way we possibly can. So unless we work together, unless we talk and plan together, nothing's going to get done. So we've got a lot of talking to do, a lot of planning. Can I bring up, refer to one of the other items on this? Because it ties in, or would you rather I just stick to what we have in order?
Are you good, Mr. Parker, or discuss it further?
Item number 10.
All right, I'll just, I'll just stay in order. I'm sorry.
We should take notes correctly upfront.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Lambert had a question.
Ms. Lambert.
It will actually, I'm going to item number 10, I believe. Thank you.
Good.
Okay. Are we set? Mr. Parker, does you need any more?
Can you give us the date and time again on that?
It's the 23rd, this Thursday, 6 o'clock in the cafeteria. It's not a dinner meeting because it was such a short turnaround on it. And I really wanted to at least get the preliminary meeting done. Excuse me. So 6 o'clock, Thursday evening, Everett High School cafeteria.
Thank you, Mrs. Garthia.
You're welcome.
Good.
Item number two?
Yeah, the vote right now.
No. Oh, I jumped the gun and voted.
You jumped the gun, yeah.
Okay, all right. So motion made and seconded to refer item one to the, was it the Budget Committee of the Whole?
Budget Committee of the Whole.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item number two, a meeting between the full body of the school committee and EHS Advisory Committee be scheduled as recommended by Mass General Law 71, Section M, item submitted by Mr. Parker. And if I may address that?
Well, we, so just as we have some newer people on the body, the motions made first is accepted, then, or the multiple motions are made first, and then, and then we debate, then we vote. So I make a motion on number two, that we refer this to our student rep, Ashley Yever.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to refer this to the student rep.
Okay.
Ashley Yever, any discussion on this?
May I make a?
Go ahead, Ms. Garthia.
I spoke with Mr. Norman about this, and he said that he would have the advisory kids ready for February 3rd, if you so desire.
That's our next meeting?
Yes, sir. I don't know if you want to do that or leave it for discussion.
So first of all, I made a mistake. It's Chapter 71, Section 39m, what it matters. So this is the same stature that has the language regarding the student representative. It also recommends that we, you know, we shall meet with the student advisory on a quarterly basis. I just, I'm just thinking aloud, I wonder if trying to squeeze a meeting with the student advisory group prior to our meeting, where it's the first time it's going to happen, I could just envision a lot of spirited, lively conversation with these students. My preference at this point was that we, we schedule it on its own night as a committee of the whole and, you know, and just, and take it from there. You know, I don't want to, I'd rather not have a meeting at like 5:45 or 6 o'clock with an end time at 6:30. Or we could do it on the third, and instead of posting the notice as 6:30, meeting to follow immediately after student advisory committee. So if we do it that way, I think we could probably do it on the third in that sense. So thinking out loud. So those are my thoughts on it. Anyone else?
Ms. Barrows.
So in that case, the meeting, if we schedule this meeting, you mean like for 6 o'clock, for example?
Yeah.
Meet of the whole at 6, and then hoping that, I don't know, that would end by 7 or 7:15, then we would start this committee meeting?
Yeah, we probably have to put like a, like no greater than, and stop it at some point, but not like a specific stop at 6:30. So the regular meeting would be advertised and scheduled, you know, to follow immediately after the committee on the whole.
Ms. Lambert.
We can start later than a published start, and we just can't start before. So as long as we
Correct.
Set it for, say, 7:15, I think we'd be good. Because if we went longer...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think if we just did as, we've done in the past with some stuff that immediately following the meetings, I'm sure it's going to go greater than 6:30, we'll be covered in that sense. But that was a good point. Thank you.
Sounds good.
All right, so motion made and seconded to have the meeting between the full body of the school committee, EHS Advisory Committee, as recommended by Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 39m.
Correct.
And the plan is to schedule it for 6 o'clock on February 3rd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item number three, pursuant to Chapter 1, Section 3 of our rules, the chairman create an ad hoc committee on superintendent evaluations and name three or four members at his discretion. The purpose of said committee is to define and create a process only, submitted by Mr. Parker.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, why refer this to the chairman, Mr. Abrazez.
A second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to refer this to the chairman. Mr. Parker?
So one of our charters as a school committee is to provide a superintendent evaluation on a yearly basis. And that is done as a committee of a whole. The suggestion tonight is an ad hoc committee to kind of build the process and kind of lay out what that plan and the steps might be, taking in the information, the guidance that DSE has provided, has posted some trainings here in Everett and other locations, and they've got plenty of collateral on site for us to review. So it's not, you know, the specific superintendent evaluation, it's just that we need to, as a body, create our own little rule of policy and how we're going to do that. So with that, I ask for favorable action. This is any questions?
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on this, to refer this to the chairman to create an ad hoc committee on superintendent evaluations, to create a process, to define and create a process only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And along the lines, if someone is interested, please just notify me. Probably better off texting, emailing. If you verbally tell me, I may forget.
Don't leave a voicemail in Box's fault.
That's also correct, okay.
Item number four, a letter be sent to City Council President Rosa de Florio, asking that the school committee be included in any discussion involving changes to make the school committee ward only positions voted only by the ward in which they reside and not citywide. At-large seats are excluded from this proposal. Mr. Parker?
Okay, I make a motion that the chairman write a letter to President Florio.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Ms. Cardello?
I'd like to add city clerk, Sergio Cornelio, on that letter as well. Copy to him as well. So they'll be working together. They are working together.
Okay, so motions are made to send, that the chairman send a letter to the city council president and, and the city clerk regarding the ward only potential for elections. You have a second?
Second.
Okay.
So why, why is this on the calendar? So there was a piece on the city council's calendar last week talking about the subject as it pertained to the city council, and at one point it was amended to have the school committee. So, you know, the intent of this letter is not to give an opinion on how we feel either way, it's just that, you know, we want to make sure we're involved with the process, that we're heard, and, you know, so therefore, I think it's important collectively as a body, we vote on this as a matter of public record, and let them know that, you know, we want to be involved in the process. Because I think when the charter review happened back in 2010, 2011, they kind of left us alone, and we're kind of failing, some of the adverse effects of that and some of our rules. So I just think it's imperative and important, and I'm sure they're all for collaboration too. I've talked to a couple of them, and, but again, it's a matter of public record and let them know that we want to be a part of the, part of the solution. So, thank you.
From the chair, I mean, it's a very, very interesting discussion. I saw parts of it, I read parts of it. There were good points made from both sides. I mean, it's a very, very interesting thing. The only thing that, to me, is a little bit off is the fact that, I take it, the at-large candidates would still have to run citywide, where someone running in just a ward would not.
Exactly.
And that, like I said, it was a very interesting discussion. There are good points on both sides, but the fairness of that, I think there's something lost there somehow or other with that. But I agree with Mr. Parker that like to at least keep us in the loop as far as this goes, because it does affect the different seats on the school committee.
Yeah, and if I could just clarify, it was a statement made that night, like we're the only ones that are doing it this way, which is not necessarily true. Of the larger communities like ourselves, I know Fall River, Haverhill, have a similar type of election structure, and even MedFid's all at large. I mean, and they're not even by district, so you could basically have, there's seven people serving on the MedFid City Council, you've got seven people being elected, live on the same street. So, you know, we're not unique, but again, let's have a conversation. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Mr. Parker. So motion made and seconded for the chairman to send a letter to President de Florio and Clerk Cornelio, basically advising them to please just keep us in the loop, in the process for this ward only type potential vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item number five is an upcoming event, Mass Association of School Committees Workshop on School Safety and Security, January 29th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. at Asabet Valley, there's a typo there, it should be Technical High School in Marlborough, Mass. Mr. Parker?
Mr. Chairman, this is just for informational purposes only, so with that I move that, I refer it back to sponsor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to refer this back to sponsor because this is for informational purposes only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item number six, revisiting the hiring of a consultant regarding the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. Mr. Abrazez?
Before I go forward, I think I actually talked to Mrs. Garthia about this, and I think with, hopefully, if you accept the explanation Mrs. Garthia gives you regarding that consultant, okay? We were all at the, you know, I've got the, the Charting the Course seminar, and almost immediately, the gentleman presenting said, whatever you do, do not hire a consultant, was, and I had also gotten a text, I'm sorry, an email from Glenn Coogee saying, what are you doing? Do not hire a consultant. So I actually had emailed Mrs. Garthia that day, and she got back to me. So Mrs. Garthia, if you could explain what the, your intention was in terms of the consultant?
Absolutely. Thank you. And when I put it on the agenda, I intended it for informational purposes only. This is professional development for our administrators. I included a copy of the PowerPoint in here, and you can clearly see that he's, this consultant is not telling you how to spend the money. He's giving us professional development on strategies we can use to help close the achievement gap. So, and that's our intent in having him in. And that's what we did.
Okay, so...
And it's paid for through a grant, so I'm not asking you to expend any funds.
Okay, so, Ms. Parker?
So, Mrs. Garthia?
Yes.
First of all, I want to recognize my colleague, Mrs. Lambert, who turned me on to the, to the podcast that's listed in, in the presentation. Is Dr.
Ash.
Ash the presenter?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's really exciting. I don't know if Mrs. Lambert wants to talk about the podcast, but when I first looked at this, I was kind of skeptical because Lexington, you know, we're not Lexington.
Right.
But...
But he had issues with Metco.
Well, that was just it. You know, you think of Lexington being a wealthy community with lots of money, why would they have any issues? And if you have an opportunity, listen to the podcast, and you'll find out something. And if you have an opportunity, listen to the podcast and you'll find out something very, very different to that. So, I don't know, again, if Mrs. Lammott wants to add, I don't want to steal your thunder here, but I forget where the podcast link is on here, but if you get an opportunity to hear the Lexington story.
There is a link to the podcast in here, I believe it was towards the beginning. And I had the same reaction when it said comparable cities in Lexington and was quite surprised. But again, I, as some of our students would say, binge listened to the podcast this weekend. And I think it reiterated the need for stakeholder input, data, 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 and accountability. And then revisiting to make sure that your overall goal, so, you know, it was, it was a very interesting thing. And I think it highlights that money is not the solution to everything. You need a plan behind it. So, I am, I do recommend anybody check it out. It's extraordinary districts by the Ed Trust.
It's on page four, the present of the handout.
And part of his presentation and training included 10 strategies for closing the achievement gap. I think two of them cost any kind of money. So, you know, it's, it's just always refreshing to hear what's going on outside. If we stay within ourselves, then we kind of stifle.
Exactly.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Murray.
So, it's my understanding that grant money is paying for this, according to what you just said. And I'm wondering what our end of the agreement is in terms of the expectations in fulfilling the grant.
I gave you a list of all the grants and the acronyms and what they go for. So, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question.
So, usually a grant is tied to an outcome?
Yes.
And the expectation is that if we hire this person to come in, the funding is coming from an outside source. And our responsibility to that outside source is to do X, is to have.
We have to collect data and send it into the Department of Ed. That comes with all of our grants when they close out. Sometimes there are quarterly reviews.
And that's the only tie we have grant wise?
And we work inside the district. We have people overseeing this. So, it's not that he comes in and I tell the administrators, go watch them, you know? We have people in place. We have coaches, interventionists. At the high school, we have data people, you know, in the academies, the small group, the professional learning time and planning time that the teachers have, common planning time throughout the district. So, we certainly take our data. And I think as we talked before, we have from K to 8, three times a year, the data comes in. We have to observe the data cycle, and anybody's welcome to come in and sit with the teachers. Some of those data meetings are really very comprehensive. And they're right down to where Johnny is missing and where the teacher has to go the very next day to help him achieve.
Off, and this, this may be something you have to get back to me on. Do you know what we're using as the bar to measure our data for this grant? If we're going to be collecting it quarterly, it can't be MCAS, that's once a year.
It's just for this.
Right. What are we using as the measurement tool?
Whatever we write into the grant, that's what we measure for the data. It's not like the whole grant, you get $2 million or something, and you put the whole thing together. It's whatever program you put in the grant, then you collect the data on it.
Do we have a plan for what we're going to use as the measurement tool for the data?
We have the.
Are we using iReady? Are we using?
Using iReady, KDA.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you knew that. I'm sorry. It's the iReady, KDA.
And that's going to be what is the base of the data?
Yes.
Okay.
And then at the high school, they have their own assessments.
Do we know what those are called?
It's teacher-driven, teacher-made, teacher-driven. We're exploring iReady for 9 through 12. But these programs are costly. So, you know, sometimes it's prohibitive. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, with that, it turns out that this really was for just informational purposes, so.
I'll make a motion to refer item number six back to sponsor.
Sorry, question.
Motion made and seconded to refer item number six back to sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye.
Item number seven is the proposed hiring freeze regarding administrative and non-teacher positions. Mr. Abraze.
I'd like to, from the Chair, if I could, I'd like to, my motion, I'm going to make a motion that for the next, until Superintendent Tehiliani comes into play, that we do not hire any administrative or non-teacher positions, with the exception of the custodial changes that we discussed prior to the meeting tonight that were actually presented to me. Ms. Cardella, if you'll speak to that.
Thank you. Yeah, I would amend that to read, to exclude the transition of the five custodians that were junior custodians. They're now moving over into a permanent position where they will have benefits and their pay will be adjusted accordingly. So, we want to exclude them so that we can go on with the hiring freeze for the other pieces. But we can still take care of that situation.
Okay, so, motions made and seconded with the amendment. I just, I just want to be clear along the lines. I was told that a, I mean, I believe it's public, I've heard that a principal has retired, has announced her retirement. And I just want to ensure that any hiring along those lines or anything else that, you know, right now, we just sort of put everything on hold. I'm not certain if there's anything that needs to be done. But quite frankly, I've just been in experiences in the past. I mean, quite, I think, you know, one of the problems I have with the federal government is president, when they're leaving, when all of a sudden they decide to start hiring people or, you know. And I just think that right now, at this point in time, that what would be best served for the district would be for everything to just be on hold until the new superintendent gets into power. I mean, Ms. Cardella.
On this subject matter of the custodians, since this is new to the newer people on the board, Mr. Stephen Bond, the head of maintenance, the school department is here. If anybody has any questions on why we're doing this, we can always invite him forward.
That'd be great, actually. I'd like that to come with me.
And I will move to have Mr. Bond come forward and explain the transition of these, these five people that have been working for us. They're not new hires, which is changing, so it'd be good to have Mr. Bond. And Mr. Obramski is fully aware of it as well, but since Mr. Bond is here, I'll invite him up. Have a second.
I second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to bring forth Mr. Bond.
I suppose you can get that microphone and turn it on because I'm sure that's what TV would be asking. It might, it might be off, right, the microphone?
There you go.
On top of it.
You better go do it because I'll mess it up.
That's it, huh?
Thank you for inviting me tonight. So, we have five seasonal custodians, as they're called, seasonal helpers, between the ages of 21 to 23. Mr. Obramski and I recently received a communicate from City Hall that these gentlemen, they've been in employment for approximately three years, should be made permanent employees. We have a, a item in our contract with the custodians that calls for junior custodians. Junior custodians, the difference between a junior custodian and a full custodian is about 5% in salary. There's step levels. So, the 5% difference the first year, 3% the second year. And after three years, they become full-time custodians with the full rate, as well as benefits, which they start right away. The other difference would be they would not be assigned to the high school, and they would not be eligible for 1 to 9 at night to receive a night differential, which is also in the contract. These kids, as I'll call them because of their age, have all been working, as I said, for three years and doing all the jobs of a custodian. We just think at this time, it's the right thing to do to get them working for us full-time with benefits. But they'd be subject to layoff, just as anyone else would be in the budget, come July 1st, if there's a, if there's a budget issue. They receive a layoff letter and subject to recall, as anyone else would be. Difference in money, so everyone knows, is actually probably about $16,000 for the rest of this year.
Thanks, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Bond, for the explanation. Few questions. First, perhaps to you, Mr. Obramski, what is, you just mentioned the $16,000. What is the implication, is on the budget, where that comes from? On the same note, where are these custodians now? And if they will be sent to another school, which schools are they now, and if they continue to work there?
Yes.
So, perhaps you, Mr. Obramski, first?
Yeah, I'll go first.
Yeah.
Right now, the implication of the budget is, we were planning on, we had already received permission to hire one more full-time custodian. We would not hire that full-time custodian. We would use part of that money to hire these additional people at the junior custodial rate. And as you know, the mayor, recently, when you got your tax bills, the tax rate went down. So, we have a triple net lease on the Devon School, which means we pay the lease, the taxes, and all the lights and heat and everything. So, because of that, with that savings on for the rest of the year, at least till June 30th, on the taxes, we could use that money to put towards the custodians. So, there is plenty of money. We actually, between the two of them, we'll have a little bit of a savings. We still have some money left, if you put it all in that, say, the custodial salary account, for better lack of term. But that's where the money would come from. Mr. Bond could tell you where they're located right now.
Thank you.
Current assignments are, one person is at the English School, one is at the high school, one is at the Lafayette School, one is at the Pollin School, and one is at the Woodyer School.
And they will continue to be in those schools?
They will continue to be. They're all working right now, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And as I said, their shifts would not change. But they are subject, in three years, at that point, we could and probably would switch them to 1 to 9, which is where we've been hiring all new full-time custodians.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cardella.
Thank you. One of my questions answered, so that was good. The other one I have is, as far as the bargaining unit, they be considered part of the bargaining unit for the custodians?
In the contract with the SEIU and custodians, there is a line in for junior custodians. It has not been used for quite a few years, but it is still in there, never been removed.
Thank you very much. And I just want to thank Mr. Obramski and Mr. Bond for putting up with me for the past three years over this item. And thank you. It's just, it's a happy day for me to see this finally come to fruition. Thank you for working on it, finding the monies for it, and I appreciate it. And I know it's kind of been a pain about it, but thank you.
Mr. Parker.
Mr. Bond, so anticipating that these five individuals will probably get a layoff notice. They get called back. Will they be junior custodians or senior custodians, or whatever the term is?
The junior custodian category would last for three years, Mr. Parker. So, it's a 5% difference for the first, I apologize, 5% for the first full year, 3% for the second full year. And then to the third year is when they finally become a full-time custodian salary-wise.
Okay, and the clock starts ticking when we approve this?
I would assume February 1st, if you approved it tonight, but that's obviously at your discretion.
So, they become senior custodians, I don't know what the term is, excuse me, in 2023?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
From the Chair, we're about to begin negotiations with the custodians. And now, how does this affect going forward? In terms of, I know we're talking about the actual outlay of money right now. But if we were to have a retroactive increase to the quote, senior custodians, all of a sudden, we hire junior custodians, and they're supposed to be matched up in terms of a percentage. So, that will be in addition to this amount of money?
Yeah, in your packet, and I'll get to it when we get to the finance piece, there is, you can see there's a significant balance in the overall account. And I did put in there what the potential settlement offers were. I mean, we don't know. That's just an estimate because I don't know exactly what the school committee is going to negotiate with the unions that are still outstanding. But we did set aside some money, and there is still money even beyond that.
Okay, but again, my, my question was, this $16,000 does not include the anticipated, if there is a pay increase?
It does for the senior custodians, Mr. Abraze. It doesn't for these junior custodians.
Right, that's right. Thank you.
And Mr. Abraze, you are correct. The difference, they would still go up the same percentage you negotiated, just from February 1st or the date as you folks decide, only from that point forward.
Spark.
If I can get a clarification on this question, so, we settled with the custodians, they get a raise. I don't know how long the custodians have been working under the current contract. There'd be a retro check, cut to the custodians. Would that also include these five individuals?
Only on the, from the date you make them junior custodians. So, if they start on February 1st, only from that point going forward, regular custodians would be the entire year.
Understood. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Anyone else? Okay, so, Ms. Gauthier.
I don't have a question for Mr. Bond, but I do have a question. I need clarification on the hiring freeze because we have a position in particular that was already approved, and that's for the data person for the high school. So, may we proceed on that? We've been interviewing, and I think we're pretty close to bringing somebody in, so.
All right, so, the motion.
That one was approved.
Right, but I'm just thinking in terms of, I don't want to make this such a messy motion. So, you're saying that someone is about to be hired?
Mr. Norman is here. Maybe he could provide us with an update, if that's all right with you.
Okay, Mr. Norman's doing the hiring?
Yes.
Okay. Motion brought forth, Mr. Norman.
To move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Norman, thank you for not leaving.
Thank you for having me up a second time.
Right.
To clarify, we are almost to the conclusion of our reviews. We have one more person to interview. We're really in need of a data person for the high school so we can make sure, coming up for next year, that our schedule is all set. As we move forward, so that's what we're looking for. It's a position that's traditionally been at the high school every single year. Recently, it was moved out, but we're rarely in need of a data person.
Okay, why was it moved out?
That was a decision by central administration, so if they want to.
Right, Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Abraze, there was a number of changes to the state reporting system. And Jimmy Murphy, who was traditionally the person that did a lot of the scheduling up here, was brought in to do a lot more district-level work with all the K to 8 schools, trying to get all the EPIMS information in, as you know, all of the, the teachers, all of the students. And every course schedule for every single student, K to 12, has to be, there's so many data elements that have to be put in. And there were significant changes brought in over that, over the last year. That Jimmy Murphy has been doing that type of work, district-wide work, that's necessitated him taking him from the high school. And he had been doing, Mr. Donahue and Mr. Murphy had been from the central administration office working on a lot of the scheduling. But Mr. Norman requested, and I think that there's a need for someone to be based here at the high school to complete the scheduling of Everett High School for next year, especially with all the changes.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, I don't want to throw a damper on this whole thing, but you're telling me we haven't had someone doing this all year at the high school? That would be correct, sir.
Mr. Murphy was there for a while.
Mr. Murphy, at the beginning of the year, Mr. Murphy helped set up the schedule. And then Mr. Murphy was moved on. And right now, we have some issues just keeping up with the demand that we need to.
I would guess some issues is probably an under-exaggeration here. I'm guessing you went to, we went to an academy, we went to all of this, and we did this without someone to do the schedule?
Miss, so if I, then, Mr. Shaw. So, Mr. Murphy, over the summer, helped complete the schedule before he fully went down to central administration. There are other things in addition to the schedule that need to be done for the high school, like the EPIMS, the SIMS, daily, day-to-day operation of X2, when teachers have questions. That's some of the stuff that we've been missing this year. He helped at the beginning, and then, Mr. Shaw.
Right. Can I just add on to that?
Yeah, please.
So, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Donahue built the high school schedule for this year. The schedule's built the prior year for the year that they're in right now. So, the changes that were made were done by Mr. Donahue and Mr. Murphy at the end of last year, into the summertime. at the end of last year into the summertime, leading into the beginning.
If I can interject, how do you know with the numbers? And how do you know how many, how can you do a schedule in advance when you don't know how many people are going to be in the academies?
They're actually right. The reason for the necessity for this position right now is that the schedule for next year is built based on course selections that are going on right now.
Okay.
So the course selection, this is, this is the time we're actually a little bit behind. We're not terribly far behind. We're a little bit, maybe a half a month behind or something like that. That's why a month off without hiring this person would, it's going to cause some issues. Because right now, what happens now is the eighth graders will start making course selections. Ninth, tenth, eleventh graders will start making course selections for next year. So the program of studies book has been done and approved, I believe. So now that's been printed out. So now, once the student course selections are done now, then the scheduling takes effect based on the student selections for next year.
Okay, all right.
So it has, so it's not like that nothing's been done for, for the year.
All right, I'm looking at Mr. Norman, principal of Everett High School.
Yes, sir.
And my question is, so has there been a problem with the schedule this year at Everett High School?
There has been an issue with the schedule here at Everett High School this year.
And, okay. Part A. Part B is because we don't have this person that you're seeking.
If we had this person, we could minimize the issues that we've been having, and as we move forward, prevent the issues from happening again next year, sir.
Very good. Okay. That, I think, was what I wanted to know. Ms. Murray?
Um, I had a couple of questions. My first question is, it sounds to me like you're describing a registrar and not a data person?
Kind of a combination of both. That position has been here at the high school over the previous years. The registrar, the data person being the piece that we would need to help us produce data for the academies. The registrar would be the person that we need to register for classes, set up the schedule. So it's kind of a combo position, as it's been over the past so many years here at the high school, since the computer age.
What will this person's role be in the grant that we were talking about with the collection of data at the high school level for the assessments?
Traditionally, not with the assessments, but traditionally, the, this role would be submitting all the data needed to support the grants as the grants move forward. If we can get a high school assessment where we could use that data, we could definitely use this person to help manage some of that data up here at the high school for moving forward with any of the grants.
I'm sorry, if we can get a high school assessment?
When we talked, when Mrs. Gardele talked earlier, we talked about the teacher-created assessments. We do not have the eye-ready system at the high school. In years past, I've made recommendations to get something at the high school to make it so we can be like everyone else. But at this current time, we don't have a computerized system to measure any of that stuff.
Would this data person be...
I would like to use that data person to help with that, some of that information, yes.
Including if we end up staying with the teacher-generated assessments?
Including if we end up staying with the teacher-generated assessments, yes.
And if we put this off for a month? When are the student selection things due?
We cannot put this off any longer, because the longer we put this off, the larger the problem becomes. We have, students are going to start making course requests soon, like Mr. Shaw said.
What is soon?
Like immediately, as we can start putting the course requests up, and we get a data person to be able to put that stuff up there so students can choose. There will be some over the summer adjustments to the courses that students have, depending on how the rest of the school year plays out for them. But right now, we should be scheduling the building for next year. At least have a, a working schedule for next year, so we don't have some of the inequities that we had at the beginning of this year with larger class sizes for some teachers and smaller class sizes for the other ones.
And which bargaining unit would this person belong to?
I believe this is going to be in the teacher's bargaining unit, from what I remember from the posting that we put out.
Are they going to be given additional monies for working over the summer?
Uh, yes, there's additional day requirements. I believe there were additional funds, I, from what was posted.
It was the, if I can, $9,000.
Thank you. I just wanted to state it out loud for transparency purposes.
Ms. Lerman?
Thank you. So based on course selections, does that determine what teachers you would be looking to hire based on the academy model?
Well, we have, we know what we want for next year, but depending on how the rest of the year plays out for a lot of students, it might change some of the way the courses go. Because of students passing for all four quarters, some students may, may or may not pass, and we'll have to adjust it then. But we really want to set our schedule for next year because of, when we're looking and talking about purity of academies and teachers having similar students, it was very difficult at the end of last year to schedule that. We, we want to get way out ahead of it this year, so we don't have the same problem next year. So we need that person since the beginning of the year, but we'll take whatever we can have, and we'll move forward and make it work.
Sir, I have a question.
Ms. Gardele?
Mr. Norman, what's your relationship with Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Murphy, yeah. Mr. Murphy and I have a working relationship. He's not, I'm not, I'm not going out to dinner with Mr. Murphy all of the time.
No, I understand that. Do you feel comfortable enough whereby you could call Mr. Murphy, as you have done all year? So I don't want to mislead this group in thinking that we pulled Mr. Murphy, and he's down with central administration, not doing anything.
No, Mr. Murphy...
Is that your beck and call? He has serviced a lot of those issues during the year. So I don't want to mislead anyone.
No, no. Mr. Murphy, and there are some other people who have a working knowledge of the schedule. Mr. Barrett is now training on X2, so he can have the information that he needs. Mr. Murphy's been instrumental in helping us. I would feel better if we had that position in our building so we could get the programming that we need, so our students can be successful, and our staff can be successful.
And just a point of clarification here. I'm not trying, I've got, we've got the principal of Everett High School before us making a request. Sounds like he wants this done yesterday. As Mr. Parker just pointed out to me, we actually approved this position back in December, correct? So, I mean, now we're looking at February, okay? So again, to amend, just so, to make this easier, and this ties in with my number eight, but the proposed hiring freeze will be for basically anything that any administrative, non-teacher positions that we haven't already budgeted for, or that we've approved, that that seems satisfactory.
To bring my starting today, or tonight?
Correct.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to amend number seven. The proposed hiring freeze for administrative and non-teacher positions, basically that have not already been budgeted for. Ms. Gardele?
I do have a question for Mr. Norman. This data person, he or she also be doing the scheduling and the data collection for the vocational as well as...
Scheduling for the entire high school, CTE, non-CTE, academy, non-academy, everything wrapped into one, and being able to help people troubleshoot things as we move forward.
Okay, and this will be a full-time, year-round position?
Full-time, year-round position through the summer with the, was whatever written in the specs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So I, I know some of the challenges with the scheduling last year, bandwidth. You mentioned that, Mr. Shaw and I had talked about the state changes, some things. But also to X2 threw a couple of curves at you, right? They made some upgrades. They made some changes. They didn't make you aware of it, so, which impacted your ability to schedule in timely fashion. What does it stand with X2 at this point?
We, our relationship with X2 is a constantly evolving relationship we have with them. We, I've talked to the Department of Education, the data collection specialists over at the Department of Education, who deal with multiple school districts, all using separate platforms. X2 is still considered, if not the number one, one of the top two products for student information management systems. They, their recommendation to us right now is because of the changes that we're going through right now with changing the schedule at the academies and changing the schedule of vocational, CTE, rather than trying to implement a new system into making those changes as well, work through X2. And then in another year or two, if we still want to explore the possibility of going to School Brains or one of the other platforms rather than X2, they support us in doing that.
Okay, so just if you could stay on top of it. Make sure there's no surprises. Any changes, any glitches?
Yeah, right now, this, X2 was, all of those systems have glitches. And that's what I call, when I call and complain to the state that they're causing glitch, their glitches are causing us to make it look like we don't know what we're doing here. They're telling me, and I know people personally that work with some of those other platforms, that run into similar situations. Because what happens is they try to upgrade their systems. And when they upgrade their system, sometimes their own technical support people aren't informed of the upgrades and what the upgrades are able to do. So I know even when we were trying to report our January 1st numbers, I'm sorry, December 1st numbers, there were things in there that we couldn't report because they had made changes without even telling their support people. So we called customer support, or technical support for X2, and they didn't even know about the changes. They had to research the changes to get back to us. So it, it's an ongoing issue. I don't think they're so bad that we have to eliminate them and get...
Oh, I'm not asking that, trust me.
No, I, I know. But I'm telling you, at the beginning of the summer, at the end of the summer, beginning of the school year, I was all in favor of dumping X2 and never saying the word, the letters, letter, number, X2 ever again, because it was giving us so many issues. But they've rectified a lot of the issues. We seem to be doing all right. Some of the issues that we have scheduling up here with self-inflicted injuries that we got, we made some changes to the schedule, last-minute changes with teacher changes and room changes that created some holes in the schedule that we had to go back and fix as well. So I think in a combination of things, I think we're in a good place right now with X2 and our student information management system.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's before anybody, we got a second on it, right? Motion made and seconded for the proposed hiring freeze, raise administrative and non-teacher positions that aren't already approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes out. Mr. Norman, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Item number eight, charting the course, school committee seminar with mass association of school committees from January 11th, 2020. Mr. Appertse?
Oh, with this, and this is for informational purposes, number one, I want to thank all the members of the school committee for attending. Superintendent Tahiliani for being there. Even, we had, Ashley was there. So it was, it was a great day here at the high school. Learned a lot. But the person I want to especially thank was our host, Frank Parker. Did a great job on it. The food was great. I thought, everything was, but again, I thought it was a great sign that all nine members were there. And believe me, Millie, I appreciated you pointing that out about 27 times to me. Thank you. But I don't know if anyone else must have commented on the seminar we had, but I just thought it was fantastic. And very proud to be a member of the school committee the way we showed up that day. Uh, Mr. Parker?
If I could just add, the building shined that day. We had 50-plus school committee members knew and returning from across the state, whether it was Reva, Malden, Somerville, Swansea, Foxborough, Framingham, Hainsbury, Worcester. And they were all impressed with the school, you know? Looking at the cafeteria, one guy said, you know, that's, that's bigger than, you know, one of, one of our schools in itself. But, you know, I have to recognize the help of Madam Superintendent, Mrs. Gardele, Mr. Norman, the maintenance. Again, the building shined, the maintenance were here helping us out. Student ambassadors, Arthur, Anne, Melissa, and who, because it has an S? The female, come on, help me.
I don't know.
Just take their students.
All right. But either way, they, you know, they...
All the students.
Yeah, there was, there was forum that spent the morning with us. And, and again, Whitsons. And the facilitator, Jim Hardy, said if all districts were as easy as Everett, you know, make, make life easier. So it really was a collective effort overall, and it was a good day for Everett. So thank you for all your help and all your attendance and your questions.
Ms. Gardele?
I was most impressed with the fact that we were all there, for one thing. We all stayed the entire day. And a bunch of us from Everett stayed after. It was done. Everything was cleaned up. We were still asking questions. Yeah, we, there was so much stuff that we already knew, but it was presented in such a way that I think we really got a grasp, a better hold on things that we could understand and even explain to our colleagues that we have questions. So it was very informative. Most of the stuff, we've all been through it before, more than once. But to hear it in that presentation, I thought that was one of the best, best that they, I did. I was very impressed. The time that was taken, and then how they all stayed at the end to answer our questions again. Because some things are not so black and white. There's some gray area, and those are the parts we have to be careful of. So I thank you for allowing me to say that. It was a great day.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
So just to add, you know, there's always something moving, something changing as we hear week to week, you know, from the administration, what's going on in education. And it's only going to help us, help the district as a whole, by staying informed. If you're on Twitter, follow Tracy Novick. She's the woman who presented on the financial aspects in the morning. If you're on Facebook, make sure you request to be added to MASAC overall, MASAC District 2, which is us by district. And being an urban school, MASAC District 9. There's, there's information being shared daily. There's events going on within those districts that you'd be invited to. And also, I think if you look back in the package the MASAC gave us, there's, you can sign up for alerts. So it's, it's really, really helpful, so highly recommend that.
And also, I'm so bad in terms of remembering things, but special thank you to Senator Sal DiDomenico. He actually was there. He sort of made a presentation. I think it was unexpected, but he walked in. And again, with his reputation in terms of education, it was as if everybody knew him. I mean, it was like Norm walking into chairs when he came. And he was terrific, again. Sal's reputation precedes him, not just in Everett, like Frank was saying. There were people from Acton, Foxborough, all over the state. And they all respected and appreciated Sal's presence that day. But again, that was strictly for informational purposes.
So I'm making a motion to refer that back to sponsor?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to refer item number eight back to sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes out.
Item number nine, procedures for un-enrolling students who do not live in Everett. Mr. Appertse?
Okay, I bring this up because I was contacted by administrators. I was contacted by teachers. I spoke with an attendance officer. And I believe last week, I spoke to Mr. Shaw. You know, there was some pressure put on us by the City Hall administration, and understandably so. There's been reputation in Everett for a long time that we've got students going to school here that don't live here. So the reason I wanted to bring this up was I was told two, two different incidents. One, fact, teacher and principal know the individual, the student, does not live here. Okay? Know for a fact. All of a sudden, the parents cut off, cannot get in touch with the parents anymore. They have completely cut off communications with the school. Okay? And the child's still going to school here. Second thing, I was contacted by someone, not going to get into the organization, but whether it's a club, whether it's a team, whatever. Person's child did not make the team. Person told me they know for a fact two of the kids on it are not from Everett. These are the kind of things we're going to run into when we start to press this issue. So bottom line, if I can invite Mr. Shaw to explain, I mean, just in a sort of a fingernail presentation here, Mr. Shaw. I mean, you know, along the lines of what I presented to you, how, how do we deal with? I mean, I think a lot of people think this is cut and dry. Hey, the kid doesn't... Hey, the kid doesn't go to school here, we notify the parents. Next thing you know, they live in Saguas. Next thing you know, the child's in the Saguas school. It certainly is not that easy, is it, Mr. Shaw?
It's definitely not cut and dry, like you said. It's certainly not as an easy process. Sometimes it is. Sometimes, sometimes parents legitimately do not know that they move out of the city and they cannot attend the Everett Public Schools any longer. And when that's brought to their attention, they're fine with withdrawing the child and moving the child to the city that they've moved to. So, but more and more frequently, because we increase the amount of attendance officers that we have, more and more frequently, we're getting some opposition to some of the information that we've received about students not living here. The example that you gave, it's not, that's not isolated to that person about the parent cutting off communications with the school. We've had that on a number of occasions. We don't have a policy of what to do when that happens. What usually happens is the attendance officers are the ones that discover that a child doesn't live in Everett, either by visiting the house or doing an investigation. They report, it's not their role to talk to the parent and have the parent removed. And I've explained that to all the attendance officers, as well as the administrators. It's the building administration, they're the ones meeting with the parents, telling the parents that the child no longer lives in the city of Everett and they have to go to school where they in fact reside. Sometimes we're able to find out the city where they do reside, and we have some pictures of the child coming out of the house or the parent coming out of the house. But barring that, there have been instances where the parent has simply refused to attend. We've sent certified letters to the homes, we've sent certified letters to both homes, if we're aware of both homes, to try to inform them. We've, within the letter, let them know that they be responsible for tuition because the law allows us to try to collect tuition from people fraudulently attending the Everett Public Schools. And the only other real recourse we have is if it's an elementary school student, we can, if I tell the principals, they have to file a 51A. If the parent refuses contact, they have to file with Department of Children and Families a 51A, saying that the child, the parent refuses to contact you, child doesn't live here. So we've been able to do that. But sometimes that doesn't even bring the results that we're looking for. Some of the, some of the other things that we've done with some of the older, we're talking to some kids that are in second and third grade with the parents who just would continually send them to school. So it's not like we can shut the door and not let them in school. So that we've, with some of the older kids, I've had the principals, I said, just don't allow them to go to class. Have them sit down in the office for a couple of days down in the office, and they're going to go home and tell their parents they can't go to class because technically they shouldn't be going to class. They're not students here any longer. So sometimes some of those factors have motivated parents to come, but Mr. Applesaves, you're 100% correct that it's not as cut and dried as we'd like to think, that an attendance officer knocks on the door, finds like you weren't living there, comes to the school, calls up and says you have to move, and then they move. So it's a struggle that we have. I think the other part of that is, and you're right, we have, I think there's a misconception that there's a vast majority of students that go to the Everett Public Schools that don't live in the city of Everett, in meeting with the attendance officers, and some of them that had nothing to do with the public schools before, they're the first ones to tell me that the problem doesn't exist like people think it exists in the Everett Public Schools. The majority of kids that come to the Everett Public Schools are residents of the city of Everett right now.
Questions? Mr. Barris?
I think, I'm sorry, I think Mr. Ponderis had first and then.
Go ahead, Mr. Ponderis.
I just had a quick question. I've been asked this a few times. If a family comes forward and they do move, and the child's been here more than half a year, they allow them to finish school?
Right now, we usually do that at the end of the year, not in the middle of the year. Right now, we've been telling people that they can't, only because our schools are so crowded right now. And when I explain that, I've had that conversation with a number of people, it's just that class sizes are just so large, I can't allow you to stay right now. But if we were in April, May, then that's a different story. But I think right now it's still too early, in my opinion, especially with the crowded conditions that we have.
Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple questions. I do agree with the attendance officers that I don't, I think there are cases, but I do not think it's a huge issue. We have, what is our district-wide enrollment now?
Seventy-four, a little over 7,400.
Over 7,400. So would be important data. So if by the next school committee meeting, if the administration can give us the enrollment, and how many we have since the beginning of the school year, how many kids were found not to be living in Everett that we un-enroll, for the lack of a better word? So we can have that data, which data is the best thing to prove that it's, they should might not be as big as sometimes is out there. That is one thing. And second, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Gauthier, could you give us a explanation of what is this resident form that was sent out by the schools? Two kids recently, asking them to enlist their names and their date of birth, kids above 18, under 18. What message was sent to these parents? My question, Mr. Chairman, is because I had parents contact me concerned with that. I believe my colleague, Mr. Lambert, have some questions, Mr. Chairman, regarding that as well. But so if you can tell us what it is this form that surprisingly, I'm not criticizing, but as a member of the school committee, I got the form through parents that was never delivered to us. I've never remember approving that. I even, I believe that would be under the responsibility of the school committee, I might be wrong. I would have to ask that to our attorney, Mr. Chairman. But regardless of that, what that form is and what we as an administration told the principals and the teachers what to do with it?
So I'll be happy to answer that. Frankly, I've been receiving some complaints, and I'm quite dismayed with the staff to think that my directive was not followed. That's the first thing. Bottom line was, and my two assistants can attest, I had the administrators at Central, and I said, look, I would like to get a handle on the enrollment that's in the district. We're not releasing it to anybody, it goes nowhere. If people choose to complete it, that's fine. Do not ask a second time. Do not try to shake a child down and say, where is this form? That's not how we operate. Unfortunately, and somebody sent me a picture of one that was sent home in purple ink, and it says immediate or urgent. Now I'm hearing that in some schools, the teachers were having the kids fill them out in class. That's not what was to be done. So to the public, I sincerely apologize. If there is any issue, do not fill it out. Those that I have completed, I'll be happy to shred myself. I'm not tolerating, when I give a directive, you know, and this is the harshest I've ever had to be with the teachers and the administrators, and the administrators are going to hear it tomorrow. And I'm not happy because that's not the directive they got. Now I'm open and honest with everybody, but only to a point. And then I lose my patience because, you know, I make a decision, and I expect that decision to be followed. So I'm meeting with Ms. Auger tomorrow, we're going to discuss what happened, but I will tell the public, throw them away? They don't count for anything. I'm not collecting them. And as I said before, those I have will be shredded. We don't have that many anyway, do we, Mr. Shaw?
No.
No. And again, I apologize to the public, I didn't mean to create an uproar. I'm only trying to be efficient. And it's not going anywhere. I'm not giving it to anybody, no ICE, nothing. And you're just going to have to trust me on that. It's not going anywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what was the intention of the form when we sent out?
The intention of the form was to help the attendance officers, really, and to get an updated residence on our students.
Okay.
That's all it was.
There was, it was, okay.
And I guess I did make a mistake in that I didn't send a cover letter with it explaining how my directive, but I was so reassured, and for the next superintendent, this is a lesson for you, so you don't get caught. Did she hear me? I can't see. That you have to take it upon yourself to put exactly the message that you want to get out there. So that was the intent.
Okay. That's clarified. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. On to Parker.
Just a comment on the attendance officers. I know we hired more this year. And, you know, I'm pretty doubtful on the perception that there's a large number of kids living in the system that don't live here. I just, it's all rumor hyperbole at this point, until I see some real data. Thank you for asking for it, I'm not convinced. I think we need to remind people, the role of the attendance officer is to get kids in school, right? If there's a problem at home, if it's rampant abuse of absenteeism, that impacts us as a district for when we get measured on student absenteeism. And we've got a problem here at the high school, as Mr. Norman pointed out. That's where the efforts need to be. Bringing kids into school, not getting them out. So just a comment. If you want to add, Mr.?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Parker. I was actually going to respond to Mr. Barris, because the number of students removed is something that we're going to be able to get for you. It's not always through the attendance officers, sometimes it's directly through the school, but it's not going to be a high number that you're going to see there. I think part of the reason for that is because I think word spreads throughout communities and throughout the community here and throughout the surrounding communities, that we are in fact being much more vigilant about attendance and making sure that the students addresses are in fact accurate. So we're not getting, maybe we're not getting the amount of people trying to come into the community as we had in the past as well. I don't, I agree with you, I don't think the problem ever was to the extent that people believed it was. And I think that we have some data that will show that. And Mr. Parker, because I didn't want people to think, and I was going to respond to that as well, because I don't want people to think just, that's not the whole function of the attendance officer. As I explained to the attendance officer, when I had orientation with them, they have a dual role. One is to make sure the students in fact reside in the city of Everett. But the other, a very important task that they have, is making sure that the students that are enrolled with us are attending school. And that includes meeting with parents, that includes filing CRAs if we have to file a CRA, filing failure to sends with Department of Children and Families, and simply meeting with the administration, the guidance counselors, and the families themselves and the students themselves, to find out what is the reason that they're not coming to school and trying to fix that so they can in fact attend school on a consistent, regular basis, because that's the only way they're going to be successful in school. So it's not like they just check residences, that's part of their job, but the bigger part right now, especially after the summertime and the flood of people coming in, right now, it's more working with attendance itself.
Right. And the other challenge is the transition rate.
Yeah.
At 20%. So, you know, you're chasing one kid, you get him out of school, there's two more coming right behind you.
Correct.
And, correct if I'm wrong, it's just not an easy, you know, you're caught, you have to leave. If the family wants to push us or challenge us, not push us, it could end up in court.
You could end up in court, and then there's also, there's a lot of challenges of to, because the traditional family doesn't exist for a lot of us students. So therefore, they have multiple places that they're living. So they might only live at one house in Everett for two days, they might live in another house in Everett for three days, and they might live in Chelsea for two days. So it's very difficult to ascertain exactly where that child's primary residence is. It's not, it's not an easy task.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Barris?
If I may just, if I think, Mr. Chairman, just want me just remind folks at home and my colleagues that we changed the residence requirement last year, this committee, to ask for two documents instead of one, with the intention of making sure that those who come to our schools reside in Everett. So just to remind the public of that, because before we used to present one document with a picture and one proof of residence.
Correct.
Since we approved that change, you have to present one document with a picture and two proofs of residence to make sure that you live in Everett. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Murray?
I believe, and I may be wrong, so I'd love clarification on this. It's my understanding that the kind of child that you were talking about, and this might be important for the public to know as well, might fall under the statute of homelessness, in which case they would be allowed to remain here legally anyway, and we would be their school. So if you have a child that's moving from house to house to house, even if some of those houses are outside of Everett, that child counts as an Everett Public Schools student straight out and is not, should not be challenged. Correct?
That is, that is correct. It's commonly referred to as couch surfing for those students that don't have a permanent residence, that are staying at friend's house or then everything else. They are allowed to attend their last school of record, and if it's the Everett Public Schools, regardless of where they're couch surfing or where they're staying, they're allowed to come to the Everett Public Schools.
And frankly, those children are facing enough issues without having to worry about this particular issue.
And that's why that bill was passed.
This becomes home.
Right, exactly.
I have something to say on behalf of student-wise. For students that are not living in Everett, and they do, and the school committee does find out about that, and the school districts do find out about it, to a point where Mr. Shaw said that the latest it would be, would be April. As a student, in my perspective, we just change semesters, so for us to the la, like, be able to change in February would actually be very difficult for a student to attend a new school, attend a new school in February, for them to restart the entire program if the latest date would be April. By April, we're mostly done with our curriculum, we're kind of getting on to our finals weeks, getting prepared for like the rest of the next two months that are obtaining for our finals, obtaining for the next school year. So as a student perspective, seeing as the latest, the date for not being able to transfer them is April, seems a little too far.
Too late.
Yeah.
Can I just respond? I think that you're 100% correct, and I think that different grade levels, I think you can implement that differently. We always look at it differently at the high school level because of exactly what you're talking about, and especially seniors at Everett High School. We would never, we're not going to throw a senior out in the middle of their senior year at Everett High School. So, but we do, we do look at that differently at different grade levels, and it's a very valid point that you're bringing up. Nice job, Ash.
All right. So at the end of this, Ms. Cadell?
Just on that note, I have to say, I know for a fact that for many, many years, no one's ever been put out of this school in their senior year. Families have moved, and they would go to the administration, and the administration would openly say, absolutely, your child will graduate from Everett High. So that's never been, we're not a mean, we're not a mean community, we take care of our own, and we take, we try to take care of everyone. So I have to, have to give the administration a lot of credit for all that they've done, even with overcrowded situations, and we've had that for a long time. We never throw a student out just for the sake of, you don't live here. And everything has always been handled on a case-by-case basis as well, even if it isn't a senior, if it's an eighth grader, whatever, it's always been handled on a case-by-case basis. And it's not something that we always talk about openly, because you start getting into people's personnel issues. So it's something that you can always inquire at the administration level, what is going on with this family, what are we doing with this student? And you will get an honest answer. So, and I want to thank this administration, and they've always done a great job with handling those situations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cadell. Sonny?
I'm not sure if the question was asked. If they go live out in the city, do we ever get reimbursed from the other city at all if they continue, if we can keep the kid in the school, or the children in school?
No, we do not have an open enrollment policy. We've, actually, we take a vote every single year in May, maybe, April, May, or April.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So at the end of this, I believe Mr. Barris has made a request, and I guess we'll put it in the form of a motion to get the data on the, I guess, the findings of how many outside students we had. Is it possible to get the data on? Is it possible to get the data on the people we believe are outside the district but haven't been able to establish that?
I can ask. I can see where the principals have.
Okay. And I believe Mr. Parker brought up, I don't want to put pressure, because again, I agree with Ashley, at this point in time, it's a little late in the day, but to, can we get data on attendance, how we're doing as far as attendance goes?
Rate, attendance rates?
Especially at the high school?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll put that in the form of my motion as far as attendance. Mr. Barris put forth the motion to get the data on students that were unenrolled. Do we have a second on Mr. Barris? Motion made and seconded for the administration to supply school committee with the record of the unenrolled students for this school year based on not living in Everett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye. And second motion, motion I'm making is for if we could get data on the attendance at various schools, especially the high school.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to get the attendance data at the various schools, especially the high school. Mr. Parker?
On the motion, Mr. Shaw, typically on a monthly basis, you're providing us with enrollment information?
Yep.
Maybe, you know, the data that everybody's seeking, you can amend that sheet to include that? And just make it, you know, part of standing operating procedure moving forward?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye.
And item number 10, Student Opportunity Act in public input discussion. Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we know, the Student Opportunity Act, which Ms. Gutierrez mentioned on earlier this evening, part of the law requires public input, and we do not want to be, continue to just write a budget ourselves along with City Hall without public input, especially regarding this law. That's very clear that requires public input. I am, thank you so much, Ms. Gutierrez, for putting the informational session on Thursday night. As we do not have, Mr. Chairman, a public comment period yet, I am asking in form of a motion, if I may, if my colleagues agree, that we schedule a public hearing in February where we can have members of the public, especially the PTOs and others, come and give us in public their opinion regarding how they believe the additional funding that each public school you receive should be spent.
Now, Mr. Barris, would you be looking to have a special meeting, or would you have it as part of like a second meeting, say, in February?
As part of a meeting, because as we have on item number eight hearings, which is usually public hearings, so we added that, that public, we add as part of that item number eight, a public hearing on the Student Opportunity Act, and we can publicize in advance, tell the public that they can come. I had actually our parents, who are part of PTOs, asking me about it, so they could come and before our committee and give us how they believe that this additional funding should be spent, and we as a committee should or must take that into consideration as we work together to move the budget for FY21.
So, you're going to make, what you're proposing is a motion to have a public hearing as part of our second regularly scheduled school committee meeting?
Correct. Regarding the Student Opportunity Act. I believe Ms. Lambert has.
Sorry, Ms. Lambert.
And I'm not sure if it would be an amendment, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I would also, because of accessibility, make sure that we have some type of survey or something that can go out to the parents, community stakeholders, and PACs, because I understand we'll have an information session, but that seems like information out. We need to make sure we're taking information in and using that data strategically to develop a plan.
Would we be able to do that within this amount of time?
Thursday, I could have them ask, give them an exit ticket. Tell me one point that really struck home with you that you'd like to see us build on.
No, I thought Ms. Lambert was suggesting putting a survey out.
Right, but I mean, just for this Thursday, where it's such a short turnaround time, if you want something like that, we could just start the process, so they know they're being heard, and then get deeper at the next meeting.
Ms. Murray?
Would it be possible to have an electronic survey with a link through the school websites?
That's.
Exactly. So, similar to, well, the search committee, I think, got a really good push at that time, and.
That's what I'm saying, how much, how much turnaround time would we need to put together a?
An online survey.
An online survey.
Putting it together, wouldn't it take time? It would be sending it out.
And that, that wouldn't be an issue, the electronic part of it, we can do through our website, we can have it pop up on, we did the same thing with the cafeteria, as well as, I think, the search committee, we put some information that it would pop up on our website as soon as it comes up, so if someone, if you develop it, have the questions, I can have, I can get it put on our website. That's not an issue.
Good. So, Ms. Sonny?
My feeling and opinion, I think we should do on a separate evening, not on the same night of our committee meetings, because it seems like it might be a lengthy discussion, and maybe have it a separate meeting itself, and it's up to my colleague, how he feels, but it just sounds like it's going to be something that if we're writing PTO and a lot of more parents and involvement, I think it should be a night by itself. That's my opinion.
Well, in addition, if we do an online survey, we'd want to give an amount of time to give an online survey, right? Prior to having a public hearing on it, then you'd have data as to, right? Sort of how we did the search committee, we got the data in place as to what people were looking for. That way, we were able to put the data together when we were talking about potential candidates. You know, we had the data already at our fingertips. Right? We have public hearings, we have public hearings also. Right, we had everything going. Of course, that was a how many month-long process, this, Mr. Barris wants this sooner rather than later, I would guess.
Yeah, because, Mr. Chairman, I think, Mr. Chairman, because we, I mean, we could, I'm fine of having a standalone public hearing, as long as we have early, early February. We already work on the budget. This Wednesday, House One is coming out, right? Tomorrow, this Wednesday, I keep, sorry, I forgot the holiday yesterday. House One is coming out, and we are going already to start to looking at those numbers for our FY21. So, we don't want to come in too late to this. We don't want this to be like, just for the sake of what the law said to do, we did, but we ignore. No, we are not ignoring. We really want, as we did with the superintendent search, really take the public comment into consideration and working diligently to make sure that that budget is accurate to what the community has asked, in addition to our needs, of course. So, I am fine if the committee will be present for, you know, to come in another night for a public hearing, I'm fine with that, if we have, if we know that we have the coram for that, because that's extremely important. In addition to that, Mr. Chairman, just finishing on that, if we can, Ms. Gutierrez graciously sent, when we had the first community forum at the parlin regarding the superintendent search, Ms. Gutierrez graciously sent translators to that, so if we could also have translators that night, as someone who is bilingual, I know how important it is for our parents who would like to come, perhaps speaking their own language, so if we could have those translators as well that, that night would be, would be great.
Okay, Ms. Parker?
So, there's been a lot of great ideas, a lot of discussion on this matter. I think it should continue, and I think the best place for that is in committee, and I think that committee is the budget on the whole. So, I'm going to make a motion and refer this matter to the budget committee on the whole.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. So, that means that we are not going to have a public committee, a public hearing?
No, I didn't say that. I said, there's a lot of good discussion going on, a lot of conversation. This is an item, at this point, I believe, belongs within committee, and do committee work on it.
What about regarding the public hearing? The motion that I made?
I'll second it.
There's already a motion on the floor, so we have to go with the first motion.
That's the motion that I made first.
There could be multiple motions.
Right. Right.
Right. So, there are multiple motions. The first motion was, your original motion was to have this as part of the second scheduled meeting in February.
Could be part of the second meeting, or if my colleagues would be okay and would have the time to come in a different night, as long as is, Mr. Chairman, early February, I am fine with that.
Okay.
So, either have come and have a standalone school committee meeting only with a public hearing, or having that as a public hearing as next, at the next school committee meeting.
Okay, so, the motion is an either-or?
So, I guess my, what is, what is better for my colleagues?
February vacation is the second meeting, so we may have limited teacher participation as well as families may be on vacation. So, I would say a standalone in early February in that case.
So, a standalone meeting in early February would be the preference.
Is it okay with everyone? Well, it doesn't seem that, not sure if folks are available. Why don't we go ahead, Mr. Chairman, for the regular meeting, where we know everyone will be here, if you're, if you're okay with it, and having that as part of the regular meeting on the third?
As part of a regular meeting on the third?
Correct.
So, that'll be when the public?
The public would come, because we, yeah, as part of this hearing.
Okay. All right, so a motion made and seconded, I believe, to have the public hearing as part of our first scheduled regular meeting, which I believe is February 3rd. Ms. Lambert?
We had already approved that we would have the advisory board on February 3rd and begin after, so I don't think you can begin a public hearing without a specific start time.
Got it. Yeah, very valid points.
All public hearings go first.
So, in that case, Mr. Chairman, I change the motion that we do have a standalone school committee meeting, or committee of the whole, public, which that would include the public meeting, so there's no executive, executive session. It's a school committee meeting with a public hearing, and invite the public to come.
The week of, the week of February 3rd?
Needs to rescind his first motion. Whoever's second needs to rescind the second, and then we can move on.
So, withdraw my first, withdraw my first motion, Mr. Chairman.
I rescind my second?
All right. So, now I make a second motion, Mr. Chairman, if I may, to have a school committee meeting where there will be a public hearing, and that school committee meeting will be regarding the Student Opportunity Act, public hearing open to the public with translators available.
Okay, well.
Week of February 3rd.
Okay. We actually, we actually have a motion, still pending, we have a motion to refer this to the committee of the whole for budgets.
Didn't get a second.
Did not get seconded?
Did not get seconded.
I didn't get a second.
He did not get seconded.
Okay. All right, so we'll skip that. That doesn't exist. So, motion made and seconded for the week of February 3rd to have a separate meeting of the school committee for public hearing on the Student Opportunity Act for the purpose of input from the public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, we'll, same thing in terms of, for a meeting like that, let's all just sort of cross-e-mail as to who's, what basically bad dates for, you know, so we can get that in place as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could make a motion to move for reconsideration on room number three, item one?
Room number three, item one. You want a motion for reconsideration?
Yeah, I want, I'd like to bring it back before us.
You want a second?
I second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to bring back before us, room number three, item number one, budget and planning process for fiscal year '21, including the implications of the Student Opportunity Act. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I could make a motion to refer it back to sponsor?
You have a second?
Second.
A motion made and seconded to refer back to sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye. Subcommittee report. Mr. Parker, committee on finance.
Regarding the committee on finance of Monday, again, but in first, I'd like to accept the report as written and placed on file.
Second.
Which we made a second to accept the minutes of the committee on finance from tonight and place them on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,224,632.72.
I'll second.
Which we made and seconded to accept bills and payroll in the amount of $1,224,632.72. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,224,632.72. Roll call vote, please.
Second.
Second. A motion made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,224,632.72. Roll call vote, please, Lauren.
Ms. Cadell?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. LaHawke?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarese?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sonny?
Yes.
Mr. Apurizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Nine, and the affirmative, zero, negative, motion passes.
Motion rejected?
Second.
Which we made.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd just like to call your attention. I had my secretary put together a list of the existing grants that we have. She put it together by title and the number, and then just basically what it covers of what we've applied for through it. So, this is your cheat sheet.
Mr. Chairman, is there any explanation for this, or just give it to us? I think Ms. Sobrowski wants to give an explanation.
You want to?
Yeah, I mean, of course. Before you made this, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sobrowski?
Every once a month, we've been giving you an update, and we'll use this one first. This is in your packet. It's a color copy of employees that we've hired since the last meeting, and basically, Mr. Apurizzi, the last meeting, made an interesting point, and I had a conversation with Mr. Parker, two meetings ago, I'm sorry, last time we did this, that it looked like we hired a large number of employees, so I went back and looked at it. Because last year, when we were putting the budget together, we did put aside an additional $4.1 million, but didn't assign a number to that. You had it on a separate spreadsheet, sort of similar to this, in your budget book. So, I went back, and that's the yellow column that's been added. So, that's why it was so large, Mr. Apurizzi. It triggered my mind, so I went back to look at it. I forget what the number was last time you said, but it might have been like 75 or 85. So, if you turn to page three, that's really the crux of the matter at the top of page three. We're really up about 35 employees since early October, and if you look at this sheet here, this orange sheet here, the oranges are the ones that we were putting in front of you tonight, Mrs. Garcia, myself, and Mr. Shaw, based on the recommendation to the principals to hire these additional staff. I know based on the freeze, I just want to make sure we're clarified on what we can do, what we can't do, but a lot of these, the substitutes, a lot of those on there would be because of maternity leaves, and we have a couple, three long-term health issues where individuals were in classrooms, that we need to cover those classrooms, they're just going out now, and they're going to be out for a long time, so we need to cover those rooms, so that's why you see the need for additional substitutes. We're going to take a lot of the unassigned staff now and put them in a classroom, so now if you have someone that's just out sick tomorrow or the next day, there's rarely will be nobody left to cover some of those classes, so that's the need for the additional substitutes. The only other position that, there's a couple of para- The only other position that, there's a couple of paraprofessionals on there that are needed because of IEP regulations with individual educational plans, whether it's a one-on-one, or we open up another classroom, we need an additional classroom made, because the numbers of students on IEPs are in those classrooms. And I know the bottom part, we already talked about, that's the custodial issue, so I won't go over the second page with the custodial issue. I don't know if there's any questions on that second sheet, on the orange, the one with the orange?
The cust...
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the custodians one, those are the ones that we approved earlier this evening?
I'm sorry, Mr. Barrows.
The custodians one here, on this page, these are the ones that we have approved earlier this evening.
The custodians down the bottom with the five names, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody's good?
On that sheet, yes. On this sheet?
Yep. And this last sheet is the current balances of each individual line item in the school department, with the overall balance on the right-hand side there. So you can see that we have a balance of a little bit over $487,000 projected through the end of the year. So besides the extra approximately $200,000 we have on this sheet to hire these additional staff, and you've got to remember, all these salaries will come in prorated, and they're all teachers, with the exception of, I think, one or two paras. We do have another $500,000 to spend in different areas, but most of these would be to cover additional expenses. But you can see, because the salaries are prorated, and we have to go out and find these individuals, so it may take us even a month to find some of these individuals. Salaries will come in prorated for the rest of the year.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Barrows?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. But there are some negatives here, right? If you look at the central administration general spending, it's minus $25,000.
Yes, in central administration general expenditures, that's mostly expenses like postage and things like that. We project a deficit of about $25,000 in there. I did highlight some of the large ones for you. I didn't highlight them for you, but I wrote them on, like, the large deficits that we're having. If you look at instructional general, it's about $112,000. A lot of that is being caused by the expenses in occupational education, which is mostly culinary, in CTE or vocational, and we had to buy some additional textbooks because of the number of students moving into the district. I'll highlight the ones that are in the negative, Mr. Marconi. Those are probably the important ones for you.
No, I did. I highlighted myself.
Instructional, special services, we project that to be in the negative, almost $500,000. A lot of this, we purchased a lot more additional Chromebooks this year for MCAS testing. It's very difficult to test the students, it's required to test them on technology now. So because we had the money in the budget, we purchased additional Chromebooks. And you remember, earlier in the year, because of some grant funding, we gave the after-school program an additional $200,000. That also comes out of that line item. Special education, that's just a result of hiring a few additional teachers, the $248,000. And in maintenance, we had some problems with the HVAC, which is a heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system, in some of the students, I mean, some of the schools, that had to be repaired, particularly with the glycol. We had to completely remove the glycol from two schools and put it back in. That cost a significant amount that we didn't anticipate. And the sprinklers, not the outside sprinklers, the launch break, or the sprinkler system for an emergency in the buildings, we had some problems with the sprinkler system that, it's a possibility, the company we had previous to this one wasn't doing everything they said they were doing in regards to maintenance. And this company came in and said we needed a lot of maintenance that we believed the other company should have been doing, but apparently wasn't doing. So I need to, at some point, have a conversation with Colleen Mahir in regards to that. I mean, I'm not an expert in the sprinkler system, so I'm taking their word for it at this point, but at some point, we have to get somebody in here to, so that doesn't happen again. But those are the reasons for those large deficits and those accounts. But you can see, in the overall, we're fine.
Yeah, the overall, fine. Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank you, Ms. Sobreski. Perhaps it would be good, maybe in February or March, to have a committee of the whole regarding finance only, so we can dig into more to these numbers and ask more questions with time allowed, get more clarification. There's nothing wrong with it, but I think it's important that, as a committee, we really dig into these numbers, and perhaps even inviting the new superintendent, so she can, along with Ms. Gauthier, get to know some of these numbers, and we can ask more questions regarding to that. Thank you, Ms. Sobreski.
You're welcome.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, ayes have. School committee's adjourned.